Hello, everybody. It is Tuesday, May 11th, 2021. It's the monthly meeting of the planning board. We're having our virtual Zoom meeting for the month. The first item on the agenda is a request for the site plan review approval for a senior project for Brian Nichols, building a high school dugout for the high school baseball field. Brian is not here right now. Since it's senior week, he's actually off on an event. So I just read the letter that he wrote on his behalf. So, "Dear members of the board, please accept this letter as a request for waiver of site plan approval for the above referenced location. This location is the current location of the Millis High School baseball dugouts. Proposed use will be a new upgraded dugout. The space consists of 408 square feet. Zoning is school-town property. Surrounding area not be affected by the new dugout. And the building permit process will address all issues and concerns that may arise. Thereby, a waiver of site plan approval is requested." So basically, we overlaid the existing dugout and built a structure over it. We have a permit from the town. So I make a motion, or actually, could someone make a motion other than me? To, if so deemed, to approve the waiver of site plan review?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Riley?
I have a question.
Yes.
Will Mr., will the young Mr. Nichols be allowed to do the majority of the work other than just following his father's orders?
He is, he is going to, he is, that's how you learn to do constructions. You start off picking stuff up off the ground. That's how I started when I was 11 years old. So he's, he's starting the beginning of the trades.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the request for waiver of site plan approval for the construction of the Millis High School baseball dugout to 245 Bling Street.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Let's see, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, great, thank you. And if anyone's seen, it's, it's coming along rather nicely, so. All right, the second item on our agenda is a request for waiver of site plan review approval from Stephen, and I'm gonna butcher your last name.
Turizio.
Turizio. Turizio, for Changeranese Spring Street Farm replacement of two existing greenhouses. So if you could just run through that quick with us, we've all read the plans, but if you could explain to people at home.
Okay, right now, we have two existing greenhouses that are, two of our oldest on-site. They're in major need of repair. And instead of investing the money into two greenhouses, we were looking to take those two down and put up a new greenhouse in its exact footprint. Nothing longer, actually. The new one is gonna be 50 feet wide by 84 feet long. The two existing sit in a footprint of 60 wide by 100 long. So it's actually gonna be a little bit smaller, but we'll be able to utilize it to its, sorry, my phone's ringing. We'll be able to utilize it much better than the two separate houses that we're in now.
Okay, well, that makes sense. So I don't have any issue with that. Anyone else on the board have any comments?
No.
And so the new ones are polycarb, oops, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I left that detail out. So the two houses that stand now are just polyplastic, heated dirt floor. We have landscape fabric down with rolling benches for our starts, field transplants and whatnot. The new greenhouse will be sitting on a cement pad also heated. So that's the one big change would be the cement pad. And then it'll be also heated, but it'll be polycarbonate instead of polyplastic. It'll just look a lot better.
Well, it also holds to heat better. I did, I did something that we're gonna be using that, so that's, that's really cool. All right, well, great. I make a motion that we approve the waiver of site plan review for the replacement of greenhouses at Changeranese Spring Street Farm. Motion's made? Okay, sorry, didn't hear that. All right, motions were made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, well, good luck.
Awesome, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
All right, the next item on the agenda is Emerson Place subdivision with Robert Fox and Dan Merrick. They had two items on that, permission to build model homes, and then there were some minor plan modifications, field changes requested by other boards. Dan, if you wanted to run through that, please?
Sure thing, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dan Merrick in legacy engineering. I'll share my screen here and just throw it up here to remind everyone what this is. This is Emerson Place. It was, it's an approved subdivision after the planning board approved the project. We were still working through with some of the other boards, so we ended up with a bunch of minor changes. They've all been reviewed by Beta on behalf of these other boards. We added a drainage easement onto one of the lots, Lot 18, for a pipe that was already shown, but we had forgotten to put a drainage easement on there. We tweaked the road profiles a little bit. Been working with the Conservation Commission, the wetland boundaries changed a little bit, and the culvert crossings at the three streams changed a little bit. And then in working with the Select Board, they have a separate consultant that handles their sewer and water design review, and as part of that review, we ended up adding the sewer manhole at the intersection with Bridge Street and changing the slope of the gravity main slightly from .005 to .004. So minor adjustments. Melissa has reviewed this and sent you a memo that she's okay with all of them. So we're asking for a vote to accept the minor changes, and also, because we have a new drainage easement, we wanna record the legal sheets again, so to, in addition to accepting the minor changes, to endorse the revised layout sheets, and I provided those to my lawyers, too.
And Dan, you, the, the last thing was that you had that light bulb that you adjusted today, too, also, right?
Yeah, and I gave you a new set of plans today, which had, that was part of the original approval, was up here at May Road, we moved the light bulb from this side of the road to this side of the road, so it would illuminate the stop sign.
Yep.
That's reflected on the plans that I gave you today.
All right, any comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, not directly related, but it was related to this project. We received the Beta Record of Meeting on the Emerson pre-construction, and I did have a question on one of the items there. I don't know if I can raise it in relation to this item.
Sure, we can bring it up, we can talk about it. We don't necessarily, can't necessarily do something, but we can talk about it.
Sure, under item six for construction expectations, I wasn't on the board at the time, but I was at the meeting when it was approved, and I remember there was some discussion on when the work hours were allowed. And George had raised the point, and it was approved to reduce the noise and work hours from the proposed hours. The construction expectations from Beta says 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. I believe that we narrowed the hours down to from 8:00 to 6:00, although I might be inaccurate on what the hours were, but they were less than, I believe, the standard town noise restrictions.
All right, well, I can, let me, let me go from talking from a construction point. We start at 7:00, and across the state, you can start at 7:00. So I would say the starting time would be problematic, because construction, we start at 7:00. So I would say that would be, I would, I would be shocked if we made that adjustment, especially on a subdivision like this. I could be wrong, but I, I would be surprised that, you know, I was there, that we let that go, because everybody starts at 7:00.
It might have been the end point that would have changed, but I do know that the point was raised that the town has certain hours, and the board approved an narrower range of hours.
On that one, I can't honestly comment. I would have to go, I would have to have Camille go back and look at the, the, the meeting notes, meeting minutes for that. The pre-construction, pre-construction meeting is done and over, and so those have already gone out. I mean, it's a good point to bring up, we can, we can have Camille look at it.
Excuse me one sec, Mr. Chair, it should be in the decision. Dan, do you know off the top of your head if that was changed?
I don't, I don't recall that discussion with the board. I know that all of the, all the permits issued by the board have the same working hours, which is your standard working hours, which is 7:00 to 6:00, Monday to Saturday.
Actually, oh, this was the draft. No, because the draft says actually Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 7:00, Saturday, 7:00 to 6:00. So I believe we had reduced it 7:00 to 6:00.
That might have been what it was. I do know it was reduced from the asking hours.
Because the draft version of it says Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. I don't know why I have, why do I have filed that?
Well, I mean, so, you know, right now Glenn Ellen is 7:00 to 6:00. So that's, I, you know, I think, you know, the end, end time of, you know, the, that 7:00 or 6:00 o'clock is, I don't think that would be a problem. The 7:00, the 8:00 start is a problem, so.
Yeah, the version that I have filed is 7:00 AM, Monday through Saturday.
Yeah, and that's the same as Glenn Ellen.
I'll have the final version here, if you can have a second.
Yeah, Alan, if we don't start at 7:00, we get really tweaky. You don't want really tweaky construction workers, okay? In fact, we, we get excited to start at 7:00. We start the machines earlier.
Excellent. It's 7:00 to 6:00, Monday to Saturday. That's in the decision.
And that's the same as Glenn Ellen, so I would say that's, you know, that's a, that's a standard working hours for.
We must, we must have changed it from 7:00 to 7:00 to 7:00 to 6:00, as Alan mentioned.
Yeah, I think that's what, Alan, you're correct, that there was a discussion because they would be taking the, you know, there would be, could be vehicles coming through that neighborhood, that we did reduce it, but it was reduced to 6:00 PM.
Good, thank you.
All right, no good question. All right, so other than that, were there any other questions from the board? All right, so I make a motion that we approve the minor plan modifications, field changes requested by other boards, and we'll endorse the revised set of drawings.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Alan, you and I have to, we have to start altering, so we're not always jumping.
You can second the most, okay.
I, I did this one, you do the next one.
Okay.
Second, the second request.
If I could just interrupt for one sec, Dan, the planning board should be able to endorse those plans next Tuesday evening, if that's okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
The, the second request is to allow the construction of two model homes. So when you do a subdivision, you sign a covenant. Covenant is a form of security. It basically says that you can't, you can't sell any of the property individually and any of the individual lots. It also says you can't get a building permit until the covenant is replaced by a bond where the roads are constructed to a reasonable standard. The applicant would like to be able to pull a building permit to construct two model homes, but not be able to sell them or be able to get an occupancy permit until the road infrastructure is built to normal standards. So the nature of the request is to allow an exception on the covenant for the issuance of two building permits for two model homes in the subdivision during construction of the roads, with the provision that an occupancy can't, can't be issued until the covenant is released.
Good, that makes sense. Where would you think, just out of curiosity, where would we think in putting them?
I don't know. Bob, Bob's on here somewhere.
I'm assuming one end or the other.
Bob, you have any thoughts on that?
I'm sorry, repeat the question, I was being distracted.
No, sorry, not Bob Weiss, Bob Fox.
Oh, that Bob?
Sorry. Bob's not piping up here. I don't know if, I don't know if Bob's had any thoughts on where it would go. I would imagine that it would be down here some.
Yeah, that's fine, I just out of curiosity sake, that's all. So I, I don't have any issue with that, it makes sense. And, you know, it would be helpful to the developer, and it doesn't, it's really no, you know, at no cost to the town, so. Anyone else on the board have any comments? All right, I make a motion that we approve the request to build two model homes with the restrictions that Dan had mentioned on the Emerson Place subdivision. Do I have a second there?
I second it.
Sorry, Alan.
It's okay.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, great, passing unanimously, great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I think you're on again.
Yeah, which one's first?
Let's see, the next one is the Evergreen Terrace.
Okay.
So I'll, we have a next item on the agenda is a Form 8 application for endorsement, approval not required, plan for 10 Evergreen Terrace to subdivide into two lots.
So this is in South End Farm at the corner of Evergreen Terrace and Beach Street. This is actually the last creation of lots in that subdivision that's been going on for 15 years or so. This is Huna's old homestead. His house has since been demolished. It's set on Lot 19. The original lot was this whole thing here. There were two barns and the old homestead. They've all been demolished. So now we're dividing this into two lots, Lot 19 and 28. Each lot has 200 feet of frontage and 60,000 square feet of more of land, and meet all the dimensional requirements of the bylaw. But we're asking for, in our endorsement, basically make the one lot into two.
All right, well, it looks like everything meets what we're supposed to have. Any comments from the board? All right, I make a motion that we approve the A&R Plan for 10 Evergreen Terrace to subdivide it into two lots.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, great, thank you. And now, once again, Dan Merrick for a repeat performance.
For the last time tonight.
We have a, oh, sorry, an application for an endorsement, A&R Plan for Two Frontier Lane and 351 Orchard Street to reconfigure in two existing lots.
So this is, this is also in South End Farm, at the other end on Frontier Lane, down near Orchard Street. As you're coming in, this is the first area on the left. You may recall that maybe a month and a half or two months ago, I was in before you. The owner of Lot 8 in Frontier Lane acquired the house at 351 Orchard Street, Ann Rich's old house, and we subdivided it into three lots. This A&R simply changes the intervening lot line between two of the lots here to create this little bump out to accommodate the house that we're gonna build on Lot 8. So it's still two lots, we're not creating any additional lots. The frontages are exactly the same, it's at least 200 feet of frontage and more than 60,000 square feet in both lots. We're just changing this interior lot line between the two lots.
All right, just a question, so out of curiosity, the lot in the front on Orchard, the original Ann Rich's house, is that to be sold, or what's the intent on that?
There's a, an agreement to sell it to, actually, a daughter of one of the people who live in the subdivision is gonna buy it and live in that house for the foreseeable period.
Okay, all right, well, that's good, all right. So just a minor change in the property line and all the, all the dimensions work, so I make a motion that we approve the A&R Plan for 10 Evergreen Terrace to change, subdivide into two.
The wrong site.
Oops, sorry.
Two Frontier.
Two Frontier Lane and 351 Orchard Street to reconfigure to two existing lots.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, great, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
All right, thanks, Dan.
See you later.
All right, the next thing on the agenda is a Form A application for endorsement, another A&R Plan for Robert Santos for 153 Union Street, division of existing lot into three lots. And, so who's, is that, Mr. Santos, are you gonna be representing yourself on this?
No, I, I will, Mr. Chairman, James Ducey with United Consultants. Again, as you said, it's a subdivision of a single lot into three, three lots. Again, all the proposed lots have in excess of the required frontage and in excess of the required area.
All right, so could you do me a favor? I'm, I'm looking at the plan now.
Yep.
So from what I'm seeing here is, so Lot number one is less than half an acre. Lot number two is half an acre.
Yep.
Lot number three is a little over half an acre.
Correct.
And they all have 100-foot frontage.
105 feet.
Okay, all right, it's really small in my, in my, in my, I printed it letter size, so. All right, so that meets our, the zoning in that area. Okay. Let me, and I'm gonna ask, Josh, does that, I don't know the zoning specifically in that area.
I'd, I'd have to look it up to confirm the frontage requirements, but.
Okay, if it's on the plan, I can see it a little better further than you guys.
Yeah.
Frontage is 100 feet is required.
Yeah.
The area is 15,000 square feet in that area.
Okay, all right, well, that's fine, that's why I was asking, because in, in other areas, it's significantly more. So that specific area, it's, it's less.
Correct.
Okay, all right, fair enough. All right, well, anyone else on the board have a comment on this? Nicole's got her book open.
That's exactly what I was just double checking. So this is RV?
Yes, Residence Village, yep.
Okay, and these will be for one-family dwelling?
Correct.
Okay, yes, Mr. Chair, you've got 100-foot frontage, 15,000-square-foot area, and a lot depth of 150, sorry, I'm trying to juggle. Yep, those all.
All in excess.
Yep, those all meet, those, those all meet that criteria.
Good, well, just, normally it's the acre and a half, that's what threw me, so. I didn't know if, I didn't know if your scale was off on your, on your plan, that's why I was checking. All right, so with that, I make a motion that we approve the A&R Plan for, sorry, I lost my page here. 153 Union Street, Lot 23, Lot 14, division into three lots.
Second.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. All right, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, hi, Josh, how you doing?
Good, good to see you. Sorry, I missed you a lot.
That's fine, we, we just haven't seen you for a while, it's good to see you back. So you're just recovering from the excitement of the election?
Absolutely, everybody outside of my front house just, we get all these signs, it's quite an event.
All right, let's see, the next item on our agenda would be the approval of the minutes from April 6, which I read, and they were absolutely wonderful, so I make a motion that we approve the minutes from April 6, 2021.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and then I'm gonna do the, the monthly update of stuff that's happening in Millis. So on, we'll start off on the Bridge Street Assisted Living Project. Those plans right now are in review by the town code consultant. They actually just sent a giant package over to Beta, so that is actually gonna be moving forwards. They're in the process of reviewing that now. With Toll Brothers over on Orchard Street, after careful consideration, the Conservation Commission has, Mr. Santos, could you put your mute, please, on? Sorry.
Sorry.
No worries.
You do it all the time.
The Conservation Commission has given the developer the go-ahead for Phase 3, and they're gonna actually start clearing and stumping. I think that's actually already begun. On 617 Cannabis, the manufacturing plant, application of plans are under review from the building, in the building department. For GTE 1480 Main Street, no, nothing's happened. They have not been, reached out to the building department for a permit yet. The same with the 1375 Main Street Manufacturing. They have the host community agreement, but no permits have been applied for. On the Collid Building, they've actually started putting up the solar panels, they've put up the, the posts that are gonna hold them up, and for some reason, they stopped for about a month. I don't know what's happening, but they, they are actually progressing on that. 114 Union Street, the old Herman Schuh Building, there were PFAS issues, which was brought up in the, in the, at the town meeting. Those are some chemicals that are, been found in the soil, and the request for determination for applicability of the application will be filed with the Conservation Commission for the proposed project. So right now, nothing has been filed with COMCOM yet, so that's kinda sitting there. The, on the Woodlands Project, they are going to, the developer and the engineer are working on their plans, and they are thinking of bringing that forwards in the fall, possibly. 232 248 Main Street Lodge Road, there was a 40B project that was just, information for that was just sent to the board this afternoon. It was going to be for, I believe it was 48 units, just off of 109. And with those, some of those would be below-market-rate structures or apartments that people would be able to purchase or rent. TPW Building is under construction. They're just about ready to put the roof on, so they're working on pretty well on that. 376 Orchard Street had gone before the Select Board, so they're working towards getting their permit, that would be the Sparkhawk, Smallhawk Academy. And the 1344 Main Street, they have, that's another affordable housing unit across from Tractor Supply. That has, the final application has been filed with the Select Board, and so that is progressing also. Emerson Place, which we just talked about, they had the pre-construction meeting, and with that, the planning board had put forth some requests for restrictions for the truck traffic. So truck traffic was going to be limited to Ridge Street and not on the back, you know, the back subdivision roads, and they were to limit the USON curve. Also, the developer was put on notice that the contractors should be aware that the street was small and that the speed limit should be observed. And I think there was one other thing that we brought up, which I can't. And I think there was one other thing that we brought up, which I can't remember right now. Oh, the working hours were addressed again, which actually Alan just brought up, but on that one, we put them on notice again that, you know, this is a development going in next to an existing neighborhood and that they need to make sure that they mind their manners.
Excuse me one sec, if I could interrupt, I just want to let you know that Boda just joined the meeting.
Oh, hi, Boda. So let's see, in Chapter ninety funding, which was the roadwork that passed town meeting, so the amount of a hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and twenty-three cents was approved for road reconstruction, so they had a bunch of roads that were slated to be redone. Town Center Planning Initiative, Bob had been handling that. The panel will culminate the study with an onsite tour and stakeholder sessions on June twenty-fifth, twenty-six, and a presentation of the town on June twenty-eighth. Bob, since you're there, do you have any, any, you get the two-minute update on that?
Well, right now, the focus is on finding our stakeholders, which again is anyone who resides in the area of the town center, anyone who owns a business or owns property. And we're building the, we're, we're building the stakeholders. Hopefully, we'll have, you know, fifteen to eighteen folks from there. Again, no one from the, who works for the town or who is on the, any boards or committees that actually affect land use there would be part of that. But the twenty, the twenty-eighth will be the presentation of the panels to the town. It'll be, it'll take place at the Select Board meeting.
Great, great, thank you for that. Bigelow Farm Solar, so the town meeting approved Article twenty-one. They did do a amendment to keep all solar, any poles, any equipment arrays, et cetera, two hundred feet from a butter's, but other than that, the, that overlay district was approved. Three seventy-seven Village Street, the Braun property, that was approved by the town to purchase with no restrictions. So they have that in need, they will also put typical language in the purchase and sales agreement for if there's anything found in the process of, you know, discovery before they buy it, which is standard. Hickory Hills Subdivision, they applied for street acceptance of Teresa, Deborah, and Pearl Streets, and that will be, that will be postponed until the November town meeting, which the engineers assured us that that will be all ready for that meeting, so those roads will, assuming the town votes them in, will be approved. PFAS remediation, Article fifteen, designed for the De Angelus Well, for two hundred thousand dollars, well three and through six, two thousand, sorry, two hundred thousand, five, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred dollars was approved. That was for a design study for the PFAS. So PFAS are, what they're called is a forever chemical, which has been found in the groundwater. And the DEP has now, and EPA has now determined that towns will have to actually remove that from the water supply. So we've had, the town is going to have to design a, basically a filtration system to be able to pull those out. So those amounts of money were voted on town meeting to develop those, the filtration to do that, and then at town meeting, we'll have to figure out what that costs, so. Article twenty-two and twenty-three, which were the reduction, possible reduction in parking space in the compact car spaces, were not passed at town meeting. Millis drives big cars, so we will not be having any smaller spaces, so that was voted on by the, the town. And then Article twenty-four, marijuana delivery, town meeting voted to limit brick and mortar delivery services, the IP two district. So basically, what happened is that the state now with the marijuana will allow businesses to start up to deliver marijuana to homes. It's all highly regulated, but the business itself, if it was a brick and mortar thing and in town, we wanted to make sure it was put in a place that was appropriate, so that would be in the IP two district, which is where the other marijuana businesses are located. So that was what was happening in the town this month. So thank you, Bob, for your information, it was a big help.
A couple of updates, if I could.
Yep, please do.
It's amazing, you know, I decided this time to get this report out early, and of course, so much has happened in the last two weeks, you can see what you added to that. A couple of things, in, in the, well, GTE, in Advisa, the marijuana growers and the marijuana manufacturers are going to be applying very soon for their, for their permits. We've heard from both of them, one way or the other. And I heard today that where six one seven THC is going to go, ten seventy-three was, that property was sold. So I don't have, I don't know who bought it, but I will get more information, and I'm sure the town assessor and the treasurer will be hearing who, who, who bought it as well, but they will, I, I assume that everything is going as planned since six one seven has already started the process.
All right, good, well, it's good to know. It's good to know that at least those other projects that seem to be stalled are going, so. All right, well, good. So other than that, I think we have to, we have our next scheduled meeting on June eighth. Do we need to set another one? Camille?
If possible, for scheduling purposes, could we do a July date?
All right.
So you're sticking with June eighth, correct?
Correct.
All right.
It's like, I don't think that's graduation. No, that would not be. So July.
Sixth or thirteenth?
Hmm, I'd say thirteenth.
Does July thirteenth work for folks?
I think so, I don't think it'll be on the case, so. Okay, that works for me. Is everyone okay with thirteenth?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. The last thing we had was the, sorry, I missed, was the pending, which was the MCEOD discrepancy zoning map, a committee to be formed. Mike Gian Pietro is coming back, so I, I saw him out and about, he must be getting close to coming back, so when that happens, Nicole will work on getting that lined up and we'll work on straightening that map out. So, all right, well, other than that, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great, thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Everyone, good night.